We will. Take that clock right at its word. All your phones to order, it's pretty close to seven o'clock. There anything urgent add to the agenda, Shannon?
Anything else?
What's that we got, Jen?
James? Any concerns or questions?
Agenda?
About the agenda, well, just the agenda.
Okay.
For for time's sake.
Seems.
All in favor? Opposed? Scary. Okay, moving on to accounts payable. Larry? Any questions or concerns?
I got something, okay. I've heard of them to say, so yeah.
Well, I'm shocked, but anyway.
Well, what are your questions or concerns?
Well, it's okay. All in favor? Opposed? Scary. Right.
Oh, I remember what it was.
Too late.
The better.
Yeah.
Was trying to get there.
Ask Shannon or Mike another date.
That doesn't matter.
Okay.
Whatever.
Great. So the next thing is, uh, item two. We is a delegation from Food Cycle Science.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
It's actually working.
Okay, amazing. Um, if I'm okay to start, I'll share my screen or?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
And your last name is Fromm?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, cool. Not a misspell.
No, you're, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, just loading on my end. Um, perfect. Okay. So, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of council and staff. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Maddie Fromm. I am the municipal partnerships representative at Food Cycle Science, and I'm here today to discuss a food waste program for the town of Redcliffe. So Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company. We're based out of Ottawa, and we are a hundred percent focused on food waste diversion solutions. And we do that by using our innovative technology called the Food Cyclr. So we provide our in-home food recycler to consumers, to businesses, to classrooms, through partnerships with not-for-profit organizations, and then to municipalities like yours through our Food Cyclr Municipal Solutions Division. And that's the area that I'm going to be talking about tonight. So we're currently working with more than a hundred and fifty Canadian municipalities across nine provinces and two territories. You can find us in rural and remote areas, all the way to highly populated cities. And in Alberta, we have quite a few programs. Um, I'll name a few. So Lacombe County, Drayton Valley, and the city of Cold Lake are just a few that we have. So the communities that we work with, they all kind of have the same thing in common. You know, they face challenges with waste management or landfill capacity. They understand that food waste is an issue, and they've decided to make a change. So the problem with food waste is really that it's avoidable. It accounts for about half of our household waste. It's typically the majority. And it's made up of liquid, which is heavy, and it freezes in the winter. But on top of that, and probably most of all, food waste in landfills is responsible for generating the really harmful greenhouse gas methane. So all of these factors make it's that food waste is a problem that actually has a strong municipal impact. So one of the impacts to municipalities is that since food waste makes up such a large portion of the waste stream, it causes our landfills to fill up quickly. And as you know, operating landfills is quite costly for municipalities, so we do want to try and extend the lifespan of them for as long as possible. And then the environmental impact is that organic waste in landfills produces the greenhouse gas methane, which I mentioned. Um, methane is twenty-five times more harmful than CO2. So if I put that into perspective, if we take one ton of food waste out of the waste stream, that's the equivalent to taking one car off the road for an entire year. So it has a pretty significant impact. And then in the community, you know, putting food waste in the garbage, it causes odors. Not nice for us humans, um, but it's interesting for animals like raccoons and other vermin who love to rummage through our trash. So by removing food waste from the garbage, we can eliminate these issues, and we can reduce volumes. Now, we often get asked, okay, yes, true, food waste is a problem, but haven't we solved this already? And there are a few solutions. So there's green bins, which are common in big cities with a high population density and the right infrastructure. However, green bins are pretty cost prohibitive or operationally challenging to implement in more rural or remote areas. We also see across the country that green bins are struggling to get above a forty to sixty percent participation rate, meaning that a lot of organics are still just ending up in the landfill. And then many people in your community might backyard compost, and I'm sure we'd all agree this is a the the kind of ideal solution. Um, but it's not feasible for everybody, depending on your living situation. It's certainly not a year-round solution. And then you still have the concern about attracting bear, like animals, like bears, raccoons, such like that. So finally, I guess the easiest, this isn't really a solution, but the easiest thing to do would be to continue to put our food waste into the landfill. But as I mentioned, the effects of this are costly and harmful to the environment. Sorry. So we proposed a different way to manage our food waste. And with the Food Cyclr, we make that easy to deal with and right in the home. So essentially, we've built a small kitchen appliance. It's about the same size as an air fryer. It's really straightforward to use. You put your food waste into that into the bucket, put that bucket into the machine, you close it, you push the button, and then within a matter of hours, you're left with a dry, sterile, and nutrient-rich soil amendment. The Food Cyclr can handle all types of food waste, and that includes meat, poultry, fish, dairy, and most bones in pits. Um, and that's great, because these are things that typically you don't want to go into, um, other types of composting systems. The machine can be used anywhere with a plug. Most people will keep it in their kitchen, uh, basement, maybe heated garage. And on average, it'll process about one to three kilograms of food waste per cycle, with each cycle taking about four to eight hours to complete, using one to one and a half kilowatt hour of power, depending on the grid you're on. Um, and then that resulting soil amendment has many beneficial uses, which I'm going to touch on in a few slides. So here's a look at the two units that we would be using for your municipality. Um, we have the ECO three and the ECO five. The difference really just comes down to capacity and unit size. So the ECO three holds three and a half liters of food waste, and it was designed for smaller families or spaces like apartments and condos. And the ECO five holds five liters of food waste and is designed, you know, for those who have more space in their kitchen or produce more food waste. Both machines are equipped with a refillable carbon filter that will eliminate any smells that occur during the process. Um, but you don't, um, need to maintain this filter if you're keeping it somewhere where you're not going to be noticing the smells. I like to show this image because it's a really good depiction in the reduction in volume you see when you run the Food Cyclr. So you have a full bucket of food waste, and that reduces in volume up to ninety percent, leaving you with about a hundred to two hundred grams of that soil amendment, um, just depending on how much food waste was in there when you started your cycle. Now, the soil amendment created during the process is completely dry, and it's a sterile biomass, and it has many beneficial uses. So most people will use it in their gardens to fertilize their soil, but you could also add it to any type of composter. Um, like Tumblr or Green Cone works there. You could put it into a leaf and yard waste system if you had one. Um, we've had individuals use it as a home heating alternative. Um, but then you could do a bit of a sharing method where it's dropped off at a compost site, a local farm, a community garden, um, and it can go into a green bin as well. And and when I'm thinking about your community, um, being the greenhouse capital of the Prairies, I think it'd be pretty cool, and maybe some of those greenhouses would like to use some of this for, um, fertilizer, so it could be shared that way. So from an environmental standpoint, over its lifetime, the Food Cyclr is actually a net negative carbon solution. So what that means, it's just like planting trees or using solar panels. When you use the Food Cyclr to avoid bringing food waste to the landfill, you actually avoid more greenhouse gases than you create in that entire process. Um, the same can't be said for other municipal operations like waste facilities or waste and recycling collection services, which do rely on a large fleet of greenhouse gas emitting vehicles. Now, in addition to the environmental impact, the traditional method of managing waste is a heavily burdened system with costs from trucking, labor, and maintenance. But the Food Cyclr is a decentralized approach, which keeps everything in the home. So you have the food waste, you create it at the house, you put it into your Food Cyclr, and you manage it right at home. Uh, one thing we've learned from working with municipalities is that residents are really interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things, they want options, and they really like it when their government brings these options to the community. And with the Food Cyclr, you get to bring something that's innovative and tangible to residents. And since food waste accounts for such a large portion of household waste, it's a, um, very impactful strategy to achieving food waste diversion targets. Now, the results from our pilot projects have been overwhelmingly positive. So we're able to achieve a ninety-eight percent participation rate. We have a user experience rating of four point six out of five stars, and we see a significant amount of net new waste diversion. Approximately three hundred kilograms per household per year is being diverted. Uh, many municipalities have expanded their programs, more households in the community after they run the pilot. So in Nelson, B.C., for example, uh, we ran two successful pilot programs, and then they decided to put a Food Cyclr in every home, which was really fantastic. Now, how the pilot program works? So it's a very simple, kind of straightforward program. It's twelve weeks. Residents would purchase a Food Cyclr at a subsidized rate from the town. They use their unit, they check the number of cycles per week. And then at the end, they keep their Food Cyclr, and all we ask is they fill out a brief survey so we can evaluate the program's success. We then present those results back to you in a feasibility study or a final report, um, so you can evaluate the data, and then use that data to support your future waste management, um, decision-making. At the same time, we would present a plan for expanding the program in more households in your community, but we would make sure that's tailored to, um, get the town and work with staff on that. Now, as I mentioned, the pilot project is a subsidy model. So how this works is Food Cycle Science, we reduce the retail price by fifty percent. We then ask that the municipality, um, subsidize the cost by one hundred dollars per household. So then, uh, residents who want to participate, they pick which model best suits their needs, and they contribute that remaining amount. Keeping in mind, at the end, this is theirs to keep using, and then you would continue to see the diversion rates from this program.
Interesting.
So here's a look at our pilot size recommendations. Um, based on experience, I would recommend the one hundred household, um, pilot size. Um, uh, since the municipal subsidy is a hundred dollars per household, a pilot of one hundred would require a investment of ten thousand dollars plus the cost of shipping and taxes. But with that said, we're always open to working with you to figure out a pilot size that's best for your community and your budget. So lastly, here are some reasons that may resonate with you as you consider whether you should pilot with us. Um, the first is that you have the opportunity to trial this technology at well below market rates. And then you can be able to see some immediate and impactful benefits, like waste diversion, lower disposal costs, and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. But overall, you're able to provide some, um, a low-cost municipal service to your constituents, all while being steward for the environment. So that's really exciting. Um, so I welcome the town of Redcliffe as a partner in the fight against food waste as I believe your community is a great fit for the benefits of this program. Today, I ask that you receive my presentation as information, and should there be interest in partnering with us, um, that you refer to staff for a report and recommendation. So thank you so much for allowing me to present. I will stop sharing my screen, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Maddie. Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Um, can you tell me about the, uh, the filters? Where do you buy them? Uh, are they just a generic one? Can we get them on Amazon, or do we have to purchase them through you?
Thank you so much for the question. Uh, so as I mentioned, you don't need to maintain the filters. Um, you know, if you're not, if you're not keeping this somewhere where you're going to be noticing the smell, so a basement or garage, you can kind of forget about it, and the machine's going to work just fine. But, um, these are just, so we provide the carbon pellets. Um, you can buy them off of our website. But what we do for our municipal resi- our municipal partnership, um, our communities, is we have a website portal where you can, the residents can go access that, and then they receive the carbon at a discounted or the wholesale rate. Um, so the price for three to four months is how long the carbon filter typically lasts, and that cost is about twenty dollars per filter change. Um, but the carbon filter, so it depends on how often you're using your Food Cyclr, and it also depends on how smelly the foods are. So, um, you know, if you have more odorous foods going in it, the carbon is going to fill up with those odor molecules sooner. Um, and then you'll need to change your filter. And you notice that you'll need to change it because, one, you'll smell it, but there's also an indicator on the machine. Um, at about five hundred cycles, it gives you an alert that says you probably should think about changing your filter. But, I mean, your nose is the first. The first tell, so you can always use that.
Thank you. Go ahead, James.
So, uh, if this was something that, uh, we decided to to partner with you guys on, um, I I saw them municipal portion, I had recommended a hundred units, ten thousand dollars. Would it be that we would have to pre-purchase all of those first from you, though, and then the municipality would be, uh, brokering those? Or would it just go through you, and you'd send us a bill?
Thank you so much for the question. Um, yeah, so that's correct. That's how we do it. So you would, um, pay for the total unit cost upfront, and then you, um, have your residents purchase them from you. Um, if this is a model that doesn't work for your community, we're open to, you know, discussing that and trying to figure out a way that works best. But that's how we typically run the program.
Thank you.
So I have a question, too. I notice you always call it, uh, soil amendment. So what is that really?
Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. So, um, it really is just dehydrated, grinded-down food waste. It's not compost yet because there aren't any, um, it's a sterile product, so there's no organisms in it. Um, compost has organisms in it. So this is just the dried-up food waste, dried-up, grinded-down little food bits. When you put that into your soil, that's when all of the, um, organisms come in there. They start, you know, breaking down the food waste, and the nutrients get released back into the soil. So it's not compost, but, um, it's a very, very good additive to composting methods, um, because it breaks down quickly because of the, um, the surface area, because it's so small. Um, but yeah, I hope that makes sense. It's the nutrients that are in there are, um, it's high in NPKs, so really great for the soil. And I can provide, um, information on, uh, from a third-party science group that did research with the soil amendment, um, if you're interested. And we have, like, composting recipes, um, that are provided so that people can add this to their soil properly. Um, you don't want to put too much in, and then, you know, your your plants get way too much nutrients, because that's a problem as well. So we're cautious of that.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Seeing none, I guess. Thank you very much then, Maddie, for your presentation. And I guess we will consider it and go from there. So thank you very much.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for having me. I hope you have a great rest of your evening.
All right. Yes, you take care. Bye-bye. Okay. So what is council's wishes? She for information. Larry? Any questions or concerns on what Larry made the motion for?
I like the idea, but we're just turning into a retailer form. We're really not getting a discount because I can find the same one online for their discounted rate. So I guess my question is, how does this benefit us? In the, in the, it diverts from.
It divides from.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we say on our compost. But they.
Well, right now, we don't pick up household food waste. Right? Like, there are communities, even Lethbridge, they give every household a tiny little bin that you put your garbage into. And then they have a bigger bin outside that you can take it out, and every so often, they pick it up, and then they compost that, the city composts that. We aren't doing that. Right now, we do not collect any food waste at all. The our compost facility at the landfill is basically relying on commercial people hauling.
Thanks.
GFL. We don't pick it up. Medicine Hat has piloted a couple of programs, but they take it out into a field and winrow it, too. They don't. But they gave everybody the same thing as Lethbridge, it's little bins that you just put your stuff into. This is a little bit different in that it, this little machine basically grinds it and dehydrates it. So there's way less poundage for one. And
Yeah.
If if everybody was diligent, then none of that would make our landfill. Right now, every household is taking it to landfill, unless you have, like, I have a ro- a rotating composter, right? But not everybody has that.
I guess I stand corrected. Uh, and the same one is online. Yeah, it's four hundred and twelve dollars on Amazon right now, and they're offering it to us for three hundred dollars. Yeah, so I guess it is a hundred and twelve dollars cheaper.
Yeah, but the big ones are seven or eight million that I saw.
Okay, and there are other ones out there that are.
You'll have to.
Less.
Same one.
No, I know, but I did see other ones that were less. Uh, but maybe this one's the Cadillac version of it. I don't know.
I like the idea, but I don't like the idea of the fact that we have to purchase a hundred units.
Yeah.
Start off a hundred units.
Or if you have to be a retailer.
Yeah. Because what if we purchase?
What a great business model they have.
Seven units.
Yeah, they got a brick and mortar store. Boom. And, uh, they didn't have to invest anything.
We'd be the first outfit that ever tried that.
No, and it's, it's okay model. It's, it's.
We think that was twelve pounds once.
I was gonna mention that, yeah, that was.
I still.
I wish I was thirty years ago with those things. Am I wrong?
They're worth money now.
Well, wait till the harvest, the harvest moving on. So, but I remember everybody getting them.
Some people just couldn't get by with that little less water. I'm sorry. There is the, I, I.
And now everybody has got a little flushed on it, it's the.
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're pipe different, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a different idea. I'll give it that. Um.
I think there would be interest in it. Maybe there'd be some people right by home, they're going, I just don't know if there'd be enough.
But I think if people really wanted this, they could go and buy one, like, they're available anywhere. Maybe they.
It would be.
They don't know about it. It's a waste. Because, like, I paid, I paid a hundred and sixty dollars for my composter, and it's just a plastic barrel on a stand that turns. Nothing fancy.
What we could do instead of stocking a hundred of these things is we could have a program where we bring us in a receipt that you bought one, and we'll.
So that's an idea.
So you know, you could do about seventy-five, a hundred, whatever.
We could do that.
Yep. Then, yeah, then we're not.
No, the greater people that use it, the better.
Yeah, yeah. But then we're not shelling out the cash and taking the rest of the money on a hundred units.
Yeah, and where do we put them? Shannon's office?
Well, there's lots of her space. Shannon doesn't take a hundred in her office.
No, she doesn't. She's got a table in there. Come on.
They can, that's what, this will cheer it. Everyone?
The new mayor might want that office back.
Well.
Anyway.
Yeah, Sean.
Yes, well. Much rooms in your office, Tom. What's that? How much rooms in your office?
I have not very much room, I'm afraid.
Tom's gonna be less here soon. Well, Larry made the motion to receive it for information.
Yeah, well, we like the idea of doing a subsidy program with a different unit.
Wouldn't be opposed to it, because if it does keep stuff out of the landfill.
Yeah.
I did talk to a few people around town after I read this in the package, just to kind of get a feel of what their thoughts were. I mean, it was about fifty-fifty.
Well, you only need, well, you don't need any if we go with a subsidy program instead of this.
Yeah, well, it was fifty-fifty on whether tax dollars should be used.
The only thing is, you'd have to confirm they kept it.
That's the other thing, yeah. They're moving out of town.
Well, no, they they buy it, show you the receipt, get their hundred bucks, and then return it. That's, and it's been known to have happened in the.
Yeah, that's true, too.
People do that.
Well, I just answered the question.
Walk with your hundred bucks, not regular.
How would you feel about getting some tax dollars subsidizing a compost option?
Well, if you just put it that way, I can see why you got mixed feelings.
Well, but that's, that's literally what it comes down to, though, right?
Not literally. You're missing one important factor that does save us money in the long run.
Well.
Every user.
And some people made that argument back, and I said, that's.
So at least you talked to some people.
Well, I did. My life was wonderful. But um, that was part of the argument was, no, it does keep stuff out of the landfill, and it it gives me an option to compost my plants or my gardens or whatever. And then uh, the negative was, well, why should tax dollars go towards that? Because people want to compost, they're going to compost, so.
The thing is, it's not compost.
Okay, but.
It's true.
It's not.
It's a soil amendment.
Right.
You're right, Joe.
But basically.
But basically, it's compost.
You're going to turn it into compost as soon as you're done with this product.
Yeah, so I, I think if somebody comes up with a great idea, they should bring it to a GPC.
I was gonna say, maybe this is a GPC conversation later.
Now, I can just try to.
We can get over the hurdle here. All in favor of receiving?
One for action.
Opposed? Scary.
I gotta go to work after this, so we can take our time.
Oh, okay.
Definitely three drinks.
All right.
Up there tonight.
I'm going. Might be an item for your next GPC to investigate.
Is there further direction that you want to reach out to them?
To get some places.
If they have an alternate model that they would consider?
Or even, I guess, what what are our neighbors doing? Like, I think Medicine Hat throws out the little container. So does Lethbridge. I don't know what smaller communities are doing, maybe nothing at all.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, pe- people actually composting, I bet you there wouldn't be more than a hundred out there. I know some that do. Some even do it the old-fashioned way, like they have a hoarded pen in the backyard, like, that's, that's work. At least mine, I just go out and whirl it around and.
Me.
Anyway. But it's.
Doing your.
Yeah, and it gives me a wheelbarrow full of dirt every year.
Interesting.
All these flowers are grown in free dirt.
Good fertilizer.
It's dirt. It's not even fertilizer anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
But we're trying to get over the hurdle.
We have our council minutes. Options for adoption. Any questions or concerns or errors? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Scary? And then moving on to bylaws, we have bylaw number nineteen eighty-five slash twenty twenty-five being the land use bylaw. There's an amendment, and it's here for possible first reading.
Yeah, like, hold on a minute. That looks like Stephen Blockner to me. Okay. Good, good. How are you?
Okay. So Brian, do you have?
Okay, you look great, dude.
Thank you.
Comes out.
Business type shirt on.
That's your lights your shirt tonight.
Um, on on January thirtieth, um, Stephen Gartner made application for a text amendment to the land use bylaw. Um, this amendment was a preparation of a development permit to build mini storage uh, bays and to provide recreational vehicle storage on a portion of his lot. Um, just a little bit of background here, before we when when Stephen came in here, and we've been working, um, the town has been working with him for probably the last two or three years regarding this proposed development. So there was some question as to whether we should just rezone that land, um, to something that does have uh, mini storage, a storage yard, mini storage as a, as a use. Um, that is currently found in just three different districts here in the town of Redcliffe, which is, um, our I-one, our I-light and our I-heavy, and then our commercial highway district. However, just because of the sheer size of the lot, um, and and then again with with future development, there was probably best uh, during discussion with Stephen, that we should actually just amend the use, um, in in your in this zone to allow for the, for storage yards and mini storage. So again, um, part of the, um, urban reserve district, the purpose of the urban reserve district is to protect those lands for future orderly development and to provide for a limited range of temporary uses until such time as development has occurred. So what we are proposing, or what is being proposed tonight, is just to provide a text amendment to the land use bylaw to allow for a, uh, storage yard, mini storage in the urban reserve district.
As a discretionary use.
As a discretionary.
Not as a permitted use.
No, as a discretionary use. The thought would be is, again, uh, storage yards are generally I can better word it, temporary use. If you have fifty RVs, they can go in and make way for development quite quickly. If you have many storage bays, generally, they can be gone and moved relatively easily without having to, it's different than building a full building, you know, with all the amenities.
I like the shorter presentation and all the paperwork. Okay. Any questions or concerns from Brian?
Sure, but I explained it well.
There you go. You must have done a great job. Yes. All right.
Jim just keeps staring at your shirt. Good idea.
Yeah. There's no more good luck. Okay. Somebody consider a motion of some sort?
I already made one.
What you make?
First reading.
First reading. Okay, sorry, Dan. I wrote it down.
He's in a lynch to get out of here.
No, I wrote your name down here. First reading.
Other?
What's that?
He's going to cruise on this one over.
Oh, I'm going to miss way more than.
That's gonna get lots of practice in the cattle.
Yeah, that will be amazing. Okay, any questions or concerns? All in favor of first reading? Opposed? And it's carried.
Public carry?
Well, I'm trying to think, it has to be advertised.
It's not.
So does the.
So we'll still get to it by the twenty fifth, twenty fourth.
Kind of what I was getting at is.
Because that's two weeks. So it might not make it, but you wouldn't have advertised it two weeks consecutive by then. So it'd be at least the March meeting.
Yeah.
The tenth.
Thanks for coming.
You can stick around if you want. It's gonna be a riveting.
Take me with. Don't forget.
On February. Oh, March. Oh, my gosh. Okay. While leaving, I'm going to figure out the dates. We can move some more press for decisions. And leasing committees for consideration.
Well.
Go ahead for motion.
I'm the last one.
I'll make reference. Yeah. Is there much interest from our neighbors? Do we know yet? I know you said you featured all the CAOs and like two replied, but. Any more information since this was?
I can one additional one.
I've heard from Drum Heller and Diamond Valley. Uh, neither one of them have taken theirs to council yet. The four that have, uh, listed them, uh, Brooks, Bamf, Strathmore and. One more, they're all.
What about Coldale and Tabor? They, Tabor must already have their own. They have their own.
Tabor is, I think Tabor is too big to fall into this. They must be bigger than fifteen because they're not.
They have their own place, their own municipal, they're not RCMP. So they probably had a commissioned place forever.
That's right. Coldale was the other one. So Coldale. Brooks, Bamf and Strathmore are all going municipal. Uh, the other two were Drum Heller and Diamond Valley, and they haven't taken theirs to council yet. So that's. Sorry? So there's. There's no word on who's doing what.
Yeah. So what happens if we go regional and there's just not enough support in our?
Then then there wouldn't be a regional.
It does say, it does say it here, regional can be two municipalities.
And I asked that when I was in that, uh, I had an information session with them. They weren't going to hold that March first deadline. Because no one's actually taken it to their council yet, except for the four that have already had predetermined that they were going to go municipal. Because they're on that cusp of fifteen thousand people anyway. Um. And I asked the question like, okay, so what happens when we get down a month or two later and it's going to be us and Olds and Didsbury? She's like, then it probably wouldn't be a regional thing then anyway. So. We could.
Would we then have to set up a municipal?
Yeah.
Which wouldn't be hard. We used to have one. I sat on the old police commission.
You can't set up this one.
No.
For another ten months.
Actually, I can sit on it. I can't be chair.
Oh, that's right.
Or vice chair. Anyway, that's not, that's not the point. It. It's actually by theirs, it can be anywhere from three to seven, so it can be way smaller than ours used to be. Our police commission, well, I remember. It had to be, there had to be at least seven of us.
Was that with the RCMP?
No, that's when we had written. Yeah, because I I remember like Glenn was the chair and Sandy Sanford. Carol Williams and myself, like there was, there's a whole bunch of us sat on that. And we weren't paid or anything. It was once a month meetings. And. And we, and Mike Pierce was the chief, so he would come to the meetings and between him and Glenn, they'd set up an agenda and we'd go through it. And this can be council or citizens at large. So. Other than it, it, to me, it'd be like any other committee, like. And it, I don't even know if you have to meet monthly.
They didn't say how often.
And then, and then from what I read from this, there's the provincial board that would be giving recommendations to all the sub. You'd really be a sub. Committee. Yeah, but at least you'd have some money to go to if you needed broader information. So I don't think it would be a terrible thing if if we had to set up our own. Because they're saying the only thing the regional does is share the costs. If you're not remunerating anybody to come to the meetings, there's no cost.
Yeah.
You have to provide them a place to meet. You know, it'd be no different than FCSS or Parks and Rec or anything like that.
Yeah.
And who knows, maybe Mike would let them meet at the police station. I don't know. Not that Mike. Or, yes. Or maybe you can't.
Yeah, probably not.
Well, they do have meetings there, but.
But they have their meetings at the.
Well.
But to get up and going.
Not very private.
But to get up and going, a regional is less commitment.
You'd still have to train whoever you're sending, right? It sounds like there's some courses that you have to take to even sit on this board once you.
But they're not sure of courses, those already have.
Well, not really sure yet, but maybe this wasn't exactly yesterday's information either. So maybe there is something actually out there now. But it mean, anybody sitting on an SDAB has to pass a course or the ARB has to pass a course.
Because we go with regional, then we just need one person to pass the course to go with.
Maybe depending on how big it is. Like, if it's us and Coldale, then we might need to have two each or so.
I guess the only thing that I would think of is to go regional and you've got someone in Coldale, you've got someone in Diamond Valley, you've got someone in Drake.
Well, your thought is that you're zooming all the time. You're not traveling.
But is it really representing your region?
The water is down for sure.
Right? Like, the south region is huge.
Yeah.
Right? Like, so.
Months. Border to border, right?
That's all, yeah. The big man. Um, but are you really getting regional representation, I guess?
Yes.
I I think I'd be more in favor of municipal. Myself.
I think it's probably more of a concern if you're getting the proper representation, like you mentioned, for more of the rural communities. Um.
But they don't have to.
Yeah.
Everybody under five thousand, the province is taking care of them. Like Cypress County doesn't have to worry. They don't have to set one up.
Doesn't that amaze?
I was almost wondering if that could be something because. There are nine thousand people, but I know they get it for free, right? But still, their members are in this same building, operating under the same staff circuit. So it would almost. Make sense. I know there, the only thing is their wants and needs are totally different than ours. So. Yeah, I guess, strike that thought. I was thinking. There could be some. Symbiotic relationship, but I I cancel that.
It would be. But you're right, even if we went with Boil and like they're too small, too.
Yeah, they're covered off by the province.
But at least the, if we did the three, that would make it, that would actually be regional because we're.
That's true.
Actually geographic.
What's the soul of this whole thing anyway? Basically, what is, the old, the old police commission was supposed to. Bring citizens' concerns to the police department and they had. Um, some authority to give direction in policing, right? You could. Suggest to the chief that maybe they concentrate on this or concentrate on that. What the feeling is out there, what the big complaint the government is hearing. Is the RCMP are one great big federal department and they don't listen to us. These are, there are complainers out there. So this is, oh, I've heard. So this is a province's way of. Forcing. RCMP to. Listen to the community. Now, I don't know. I don't, I don't personally think that of our department, but there's probably people in Redcliff that do.
Oh, for sure. Oh, yeah, lots, actually.
Yeah, they give us reports and they ask for input as well, right? Yeah, and we give them our priorities and and he sets up his reports to show that they're trying to meet those initiatives. But like I say, when you go out in the public. There's somebody complaining that they're never there and they're not doing anything and they're certainly not policing Redcliff.
And this will satisfy those people?
No, but this is a provincial matter.
Well, no, what that's going to do is.
But these people complain about.
No, no, but the people on this committee then have to deal with that.
Yeah.
So.
People complain about policing no matter what.
Right, but at least those people have an avenue direct to complain to them. They're not complaining to somebody in Edmonton. They're complaining to the police commission.
I get the theory about it, but right now without this commission, where are they at? They can complain, ask, we can pass.
Yeah. See, there, that's true.
So. That's the way the old police commission used to work. Medicine Hat has their own police commission. But the other thing is. This. A provincial representative will sit on every board. Saying, like, they were talking, putting two provincial members on the medicine at police commission because of the amount of. Committee members sitting in that police commission. So they, the province also wants in on all the municipal run police forces too. So I don't, I don't understand that, but. That was, now that they have changed too, but that, when this first came out, that was. Part of the rhetoric coming with it. And some people were wondering why this government wanted to be involved in everything. They thought they were pushing the sheriff agenda. Or the provincial police agenda. I don't know. But if we had to set up a three or four member or a three or five member, as soon as you set up over three, then you're going to get two, up to two provincial members.
Excellent. One for every three, right?
And one for every three or almost three.
Every group of three.
So if you go four, they send you two. So you may as well go five. So if they send two, then you've got seven, because you always want to keep it odd, right? But that's my thought on it.
Don't worry about that, right?
I, and and I'm glad Mike looked into it and we don't have to figure it out tonight, but I think if nobody else is doing it. And even then, the zooming is, in my opinion, is never the easiest way to run a meeting. So if we're gonna have to bite this, let's just bite it and set up our own. We just need a bylaw that says we're gonna set up a.
You have to get ministerial approval?
Yeah. That we want to go on our own, but we don't have to do it right now just in case something wonderful happens and people want to be our friend.
So you're recommending not vote on this plan and wait and see?
Well, not, I should, I guess we should decide. I don't know if we have to vote on it, but we should.
There is a motion.
Yeah, because the motion was to.
To join the regional.
Go number one, which was regional, which is. No, because I think that's going to be a pain in the butt.
You can imagine.
But we can, we can always do that. Like, that's what discussion does.
Should we just receive this? Infer information?
Well, with the deadline approaching, we should have, we should actually be trying to make our way there.
Well, we still have one more meeting before the deadline.
Well, but some direct administration. Whether or not, do you want us to further investigate the regional and then come back and report and then you make a decision? Or do you just want to direct us to?
How would you feel about amending your motion option too, Matt?
I was leaning more towards that anyways.
Have to rescind the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. We can vote.
We'll see.
Yeah.
That's easy. I like to wait and see option as well.
But all we're doing is delaying it by two weeks.
Yeah.
Yep. See, where's where it happened?
Okay.
Receive fair information.
I mean, I'm just one vote, whatever.
You know, the best thing you could do is table this till the next meeting. Because you have to, when you table something, you have to name the date and and direct administration to. Follow any leads that are out there.
That should be the next most.
So I'd like to.
That's a good motion. Table this. Finish it. You'll table it till the next meeting and as Mike will just inquire, because he's the one that's been doing the footwork. So. And we have a lot of luck.
When Ed Drum Ellis was going on the eighteens.
So much love, friends.
And you said a Coldale was going on their own?
Yeah.
Because to me, they're the elements, so if they're going on their own, that great. Drum is not close.
No.
Yeah.
All right, we start getting far, like you said.
Yeah. So it's table till the next meeting. Hopefully, Mike gets a little more hungry. If nobody wants to be with us, then we're on our own.
I've gotten used to that feeling for many years now.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Understood.
All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
All right, Mike.
Assessments services for consideration. It's part of the consideration.
Well, it seems like it's been around down our throat, but.
A buck a year. Like, is there never an end?
Put a motion on the table, option number one.
If we set it up for.
Nobody else did.
Yeah, that was back before you tried to.
And that was, I emailed each assessments firm in Alberta. And we got no response other than theirs. The ones that did said, we're too far away. Um, anyone, even people in Calgary and North just said, we're too far away and it's not going to be worth our while.
So we're stuck by the bucket here increases.
So Kathy made the motion.
So it's kind of in line with other municipality costs?
Cheaper.
Cheaper than other municipalities?
I wouldn't say it's cheaper. So just off the top of your head, Mike, what's an assessor make a year?
I think we looked at the city and some of theirs are ninety fiveish a year.
So we are in, we are approaching.
Yeah.
Hiring our own assessor.
Yeah.
Are they hard to find? Are they so super talented? There's only one in every five hundred million.
They are not common.
That's because there's not a lot of jobs for them.
Right, if you've got.
Like brain surgeons. You just don't see them on every corner.
Yeah.
That's why I'm not, I couldn't find a position.
Yeah, that's a lot of sass. And you practice on yourself quite a while before you apply. Okay. No, I was just wondering, because as I just look at, as we're starting to approach close, the only thing is by the time you murk on top of that.
Yeah, and you remember.
Then you're up. Yeah. Okay?
Especially with three weeks.
Well, they have to know that too, and and they have to know that they're not spending a whole year on Redcliff.
No.
So they're not doing us any favors. So. Okay. Anybody else have any groupiness to ooze out?
I, yeah, I love it for the career of just handing it. I'll be honest, I'm not fair to Saturday, but no one else is really dependent on it then.
I think there's a little bit of.
Say it out loud.
I can't.
I know.
Yeah. Okay.
Girls are bald, right?
No. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Scary? Water center pool rehabilitation for consideration.
She's a little one spoken.
Larry. James.
So, I know we talked about this.
At GPC.
At GPC. About this sometimes, I think, but. So I know somebody who works for the city and and I was talking about outdoor pools and. And because they're in the process of redoing Hill Pool, I believe it is. And I just mentioned that we were, we had approved a budget to redo the Redcliff pool this summer due to some lifting tiles. Or many lifting tiles. And he asked, well, what's the direction they were thinking of going? And I said, well, they're telling us a pool liner is the best option. And he very strongly advised against that. So I'm just, and this is just his opinion, but. He knows more about than I do. And so I'm just wondering, have we actually researched other options? Or are we going with a pool liner? Because it was the first thing that was suggested to us.
I just have a quick question. Why is he against it? They don't stand up to our climate.
So I did do some research. I reached out to, uh. Coldale, the Parkson. Parkson Facilities Director, um, and I spoke to him. Uh, about what they've done and they've had, uh, pool liners. Um, or. um, for fifteen years. Didn't have any problems with them. Um, looked at some other swimming pools. Uh, I believe that Raymond did, uh, a pool liner there. They didn't have any problems. McGrath has done a pool liner.
And they're all outdoor pools?
They're all outdoor pools. Tiles are great in an indoor application, but they don't seem to be standing up. For whatever reason.
Not the ones we have.
Not the ones that we have anyways, yes. Um, so everybody that I've, I've reached out to, that I've made contacts with in the, in the past, I've spoken to, uh, consort. Um, they went with the pool liner as well. Um, and everybody's been very, very happy with them. They have, they have stood up over time. They have uh, handled the, the winter climate very well. Um, so that, that was the reason why we sort of were leading that direction. Um. Yeah, so, um, with regards to our, our RFP, um, we did have it closed. Um, I would like to recommend that we go with the Acapulco Pool Limited. Um, and not go with the Paradise Pools, uh, simply for the fact that, uh, Paradise Pools could not get us in until possibly September or October. Uh, they said that they could maybe squeeze us in, so there wasn't, they were booked up solid up until then. Um, the Acapulco Pool people were the next lowest bid. Um, she did come out specifically to view the pool from Ontario. Um, they have, in their, in their RFP, they, they did, um, indicate that they had the the pool liner already in stock and they were able to start March fourth and, uh, get us done for the upcoming season.
Go ahead, Ben. So you said Paradise might be able to do it. So would that mean possibly requiring emptying our pool? And so they can put this liner in and like, what are the words to this?
So in September, October, we would, we would be done with the season? I, I don't believe that our, our tiles are gonna last another season.
I don't think so.
They're, they're, they're coming off both the, the small pool and the big pool. Uh, we were in there, um, in the fall, uh, showing some, some, uh, potential contractors around. And there's more, um, I don't know what that dead spot, but um, hollow spots that you can, like when you tap it with a screwdriver, you can see or you can hear that it's, it's not solid underneath. So we're anticipating more tiles to be lifting this year. Um, and it's been, it's been an issue since I've gotten here, so.
Um, being from Ontario, do we know anything about this Acapulco, Acapulco company?
Uh, no, just what they, just what they've sent. Um, like I said, she did, she did fly out specifically for the site visit. Uh, she did send me some samples of some, some liners. I can send theirs to you guys if you'd like.
Did they send you a page of references too?
Yes, I have some references.
Okay, well, that's, yeah.
I think that's what he was asking for.
Oh, yeah.
If it's gonna be their first pool.
Yeah, no, no, this isn't their first pool.
Not the second, third.
Because the Acapulco I know is going way south here.
Yeah.
Winter problems. So. And they all know that we have rigid walls, right? Like most liners go into sand bedded pools, right? And we're, we were Marsite before we went tile, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so they all know that.
Yes.
Are they gonna be putting sand in it anyway? On the bottom to help?
I know, so what, what we're gonna do is we're gonna li- uh, remove the loose tiles that are, that we or what they identify. We're gonna put down some filler and then they're gonna be a, uh, they put down a felt.
Okay.
First, and then the liner was on top of the.
Okay, so the felt is gonna be the, the sink from the Marsite or tile. Cause I didn't think they wanted directly on it, cause.
Yes.
Yeah, cause, okay. Well, they have to know what they're doing. So the other question I have is, are they going to take off a lot of of the sidewall? So if those tiles come off in the future, they're not gonna start pushing the line earlier. You know what I mean?
Yes, we haven't, we haven't identified any problems with the sidewalls.
Oh, okay.
As of yet.
Okay, it's not, then let's not talk about it.
It's, it, it's, it's been, uh, it's been, uh, the bottom
Okay.
That, that has been issued.
And, and this tile, they have to do something with the deck, like to the liner roll, rolls under the deck or?
Uh, yeah, so it kinda comes up, um, just to the, to the, kind of the bottom of the, sort of the lip.
Uh huh.
I believe, and I think they blew it down or they attached it somehow.
Okay, so they, okay, so. So it won't be any deck rehabilitation? There won't be cutting and sawing and redoing?
No.
Okay.
So my understanding is it, it kinda comes in a big roll and then they kinda heat, uh, weld it together in two pieces, so it's nice and smooth and, and whatever else you want.
And this is both pools?
It's the both pools.
Yeah, well, the way he was talking, the both of them are falling apart twice. Kids one was, it's a little black mats all over. Little kids hardly notice stuff like that.
I looked them up online. They have a good, uh, review rating, four point six out of five.
There was, they do, uh, they do pools across Canada. I have a, uh, reference here from Cleveland, Ontario. Uh, they did Diamond Valley Pool.
So it's got the Alberta climate contingent in it.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, New Brunswick.
They send over a representative, which is a good sign.
That is a good sign, yeah.
I don't know, for thirty-five thousand, I don't know, more to flight. That right, that review might change my mind right there.
Hopefully they're not driving over here.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, I just did a couple of quick Google searches. It seems like Marsite Blaster in colder climates, it has the same lifespan as vinyl, so.
Yeah, and we've run Marsite ever since we've had that pool, but it's every ten years or so, you're redoing it anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying about the vinyl.
Yeah, so then it came up, this, these tiles were supposed to be a great thing and, and they weren't. And we paid.
A lot of money.
More than that.
Yeah. It's.
Well, we had.
Yeah.
A contractor that doesn't do on time budget.
He has to put them on through the winter and.
Anyway, is there warranty on this?
Uh, two-year warranty on, uh, labor and material and five-year warranty on the vinyl membrane for the Acapulco.
And they said they could start it, uh, beginning of March?
March, March fourth.
Fourth, yeah. Yeah, how long do they need for the project?
Uh, I think they said roughly three to four weeks to get it all in and get going.
So definitely be ready for pool season if they, even if they have problems.
Yes.
Not for March?
Oh, wow. Yes, yes, it is.
Yes.
I'm putting that out there right now.
Guaranteed.
Balls like Billy, never saw his shadow.
Well, I saw, I read some balls like Billy said, five more weeks of hockey, but.
He doesn't, anyway.
Thanks, change his first name.
Yeah, well, I would, just another thing I was reading on here is like sixty degrees Fahrenheit, so you gotta be in the spring temperatures, right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm hoping that they come when the weather is, cause it's, like, otherwise they're hoarding and eating and, and defrosting. That's the worst part is.
Well, getting that.
If it's still cold and we're cold for two more weeks. So I'm not thinking.
I'm thinking March fourth.
March fourth.
Well, the tiles were done in terrible condition, so maybe that's part of the problem too. I don't know. It wasn't my deal.
But we're, we're, we're doing the latter on this. Okay.
Maybe touch base with them about that if we, if this vote goes that way.
So Gary made the motion?
They go with the Acapulco?
With Acapulco, okay. Yeah. So all in favor? Both? Gary? Yeah, I, I, that's an optimistic date. I guess that could be the only caution.
And we don't need it that, so.
No, don't, don't play it. Yeah, we need, we open, well, usually they start doing the pool in May, so we can be open in June, right? In the May, start of June, four weeks.
We, we usually have the schools coming in the last week of, of May, and then we usually have our soft opening in June where it's more school, then we do some, some swimming lessons and that sort of thing. And then July, we're in, uh, in the for running.
Draw free swims. Good. Policies. Policy number one fifty-six workplace and.
I did, I read the other two as well.
Didn't think it.
Prove it as presented.
I had a question. So just because this was possibly an issue a little while ago. Um, when it comes to reporting incidents, it says here on, I'm on page five, wanting uh, number four, workers are encouraged. Right there. Workers are encouraged to report any incidents or concerns related to violence harassment. Immediately, reporting procedures include reporting the incident to supervisor, manager, director, or designated representative. What if the um, incident being reported is about the C A L?
Looks recovered off in the in the Bible.
Oh, so that's separate from this? Okay, so. Then why do we need this?
This province says you have to have a violent harassment policy.
Okay.
And now they have to be combined. Two years ago, they had to be separate.
Well, that's, yeah, I saw that, but I'm just wondering if we should put wording in, in this one, so that we're not having the issue of, well, this is the policy, this is the code of conduct by law, and people getting confused. Just a suggestion, I guess. Cause you don't really have a supervisor, but if you were harassing somebody and they didn't feel comfortable coming to you about it, are they gonna know where to go?
We did make changes to use the policy or the bylaw. Um.
Policy.
And which, um, complaints made about, or, or this year would then be different to you guys.
Okay, or you slam the door?
Fair enough, but I'm wondering, just because, I'm not saying people stupid, but sometimes people don't always know where to look. And if they think that you are being violent or harassing, they might come to the workplace, violence and harassing policy. And then they're not gonna go to you and say, Shannon, where do I look to find?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if, and I, I know it, we have another thing, but maybe if, if we have to do this up, if we just have.
What reference put in there?
Yeah. Well.
People have approached other people.
Yeah, but we also have new hires, right? Like, the heat, if the heat got mad at Shannon, if Shannon was harassing him, sorry, but he he had a new hire, right? Like he. I'm just, for the sake of making things easy, because this can be a sensitive subject and it can be something that people maybe don't feel comfortable coming forward with, and maybe they don't feel comfortable talking to somebody else about, to try to find out that information, because they like, feel like there might be retaliation or targeting or whatever. I don't know, whatever you guys think, cause it's a council thing, but I'm just wondering if we should have wording in there that it references it or that even just re-lines it out. Not saying you'd ever do that, Shannon, but
You don't actually like.
Yeah, the next one, Mike. Shannon's nice.
And Shannon might not be around forever. Ever so far. Almost just forever.
I don't know what your thoughts are on it, but I just, I think that, like, these particular types of things are very sensitive topics when they actually have to be used.
I agree they are, but if that situation ever arose, I'm sure they would find out. They would figure it out for themselves in the meeting, but you put it in there, I'm indifferent. I don't care.
Well, there, there, if you look between Mike and Bonnie, they're pulling up the code of conduct policy, which also talks about that's the whole policy, just dealing with municipal managers. Because otherwise, the paragraph above it talks about who you complain to. Anyway, so I, I don't know, like, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know if, if we need it. Cause this is code of conduct, this is violence harassment. And, and then they're all mentioned in there. It must, it must be in writing if they count being the code of conduct workplace. So that wording will have to be changed. We'll probably have to go through a whole bunch of bylaws, cause now it's gonna be one bylaw instead of two. That will make it wonderful. And this isn't that old.
This is probably. This is years old too. I think we brought this in after.
Nope, she was here when that happened. She was part of the author of this.
Oh, okay.
We did amend it after though.
Oh, you did? I thought you did. I remember seeing that.
Okay, yeah. Cause she was the original author and it was art.
By twenty-three, that's two years.
So depending on your wishes.
Could we put a reference to this policy in there maybe or?
You can send it back to administration and we can do a further review if you would like.
Just my thoughts.
So the other question is, your definition of sexual harassment. Well, because it's kind of weird, but when you look at it, any, is a workplace hazard refers to any sexual act, attempt to obtain a sexual act or other act? Well, we've had people get together here.
No.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's happening during work time, but they've got together here. It doesn't say unwanted.
Like started a relationship?
If two people start having a relationship, cause they meet working for the town, technically.
They're against the bylaw.
I'm just saying, it's. I know what that means. No, it wouldn't count. I don't work here. Who says he was talking about you? Cause it says it refers to any sexual act, attempt to obtain a sexual act or other act. It, it doesn't, it, we're talking, so you're, so much of us think it's probably an unwanted, but that's not what it's.
Hey, try and like, and not just adding a substantial on there.
No, cause.
Unconsensual.
Unconsen- like, unless, I don't know. Cause they're calling it violence.
Yeah.
I'm wrong. Well, if it is consensual, who's gonna reference this?
Probably not gonna complain, but I could say after.
Yes, didn't like it.
You can take it back and, and review it.
I don't know, like, is this how the rest of the definitions are? I'm sure you've looked at somebody else's.
And check the definition.
And I think I even know what staff member did it. Cause she said so in the management report.
You can have a staff contact list.
Yeah, yeah, and.
That's common sense that I didn't do with it.
No. Wait so long, no, we can't even find it.
There is still.
Oh, I wish it would come back.
There is still common sense.
Oh, my gosh. It would be easy if that was there. Anyway.
So I.
Don't write it in if it doesn't need to be wrote in.
Again, if you have questions, you'll leave this back and we will review it. However, council would like to direct us.
Or we can just vote it in.
Or we forgot.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Is carried. Great. Number seven, correspondence.
See for information.
Got the. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, can somebody tell me what the letter says? Give me the gist of it.
Well, they sent it to me. And I couldn't answer it.
What does it say? As you can see, I can't read.
They want you to. Why can't you read it?
Oh, they want us to support them.
They want.
In their union.
Negotiation.
Yes, that'd be a real good idea.
Why?
Well, that's why I sent it to Shannon, because I was not gonna answer it. I'm not in favor of keeping them around.
No, they want us to support keeping.
Shannon, we're close to. Your delivery. They heard they heard on the airingly how it was very, very important.
Yeah.
And it's like, you guys need a life.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of supporting it.
Yeah, but Kathy just moved it for receive for information, so that's what I would have done too. You want to read it? I broke it. What page do you want to read?
Yeah, it's it's I got the gist of it. I. Heard from.
Go ahead and read.
Brightest and smartest.
There's two pages before you finally find out it's a union to do, want and support to go fight to be governing. Because you have been ordered back to work, you know, it's just an atrocity.
Well, I got the gist of it. That's good.
Brilliant, too.
What the? You could take a run. Might affect us.
All in favor? Opposed, let's carry. Municipal manager report to council. Any questions on any of the reports? Uh. The.
Is our fire truck fully operational?
No. But it's very shiny.
Yes, we can use the fire.
It's very shiny.
It's very well.
Very shiny.
I'm not shiny.
That's shiny.
What's left to do on it?
What should be washed again.
Sorry, we can't come and save your family. We gotta wash our truck.
Play with their hoses.
It's James.
It's in the process of being switched over and training.
Okay.
It is training to flip a switch here instead of here or?
Yes, exactly.
Really?
Yes, exactly. Things needed to be done to it when it got here, so.
Correct, and for the most part, they are all done with the exception of.
What was wrong with Zamboni again?
Where did that one come from?
Manager's report. Changing topic.
Tom, do you have an answer?
Uh, the Zamboni is uh. Giving us some some bits and connections um. It's it seems uh. Well, this last four rounds, we were experiencing. Um, some squeaking. When we turned to the right. Um, we had the mechanics come down to look at it. There was a. We have a potential ball bearing that was seized. Uh, so it uh. Greased it up, I believe. Um. While he was doing his service, there was a. Uh, indication of some. Hydraulic hoses sweating, not leaking yet, but uh potential is there for that to happen. Uh, we've replaced the springs, the leaf springs in them. I believe that was last year. So it's it's starting to nickel and dime us, so I just wanted. Everybody to sort of be aware that.
It's health pitch.
We are, we are, uh, we are experiencing. Ongoing maintenance.
If it's still nick, if it's still nickels and dimes, it's not quarters and dollars yet, leaving alone, just work on it.
We we are.
Oh, Jim. Words of wisdom. Write that down. Write that down.
Olds are in Zamboni.
Not that old.
No.
It's uh fifteen years, I believe.
What's that old?
Twenty fifteen.
Ten years old.
Ten years old?
Yeah, they told him enough to ten years old.
Yeah.
No. Ten, ten years old?
Nice sales pitch.
Grass.
So don't be surprised in the fall.
So if it's weekend going right, what can?
Yeah, I was thinking, can you?
Yeah.
Let's. Do that scar.
Yeah. Wasn't the grease cap taken off the grease devil when you guys looked at it?
Yes.
My guys went to seize that motor and grease cap was still on there after three years.
That's probably what kept it running that long, because the dust would have gone anyway. Don't you should have bought a Ford?
Oh, sure.
Zamboni.
Eight years.
Um.
Would have faded to the red tape.
In our uh development at Safety Co permanent status. We've had six ongoing enforcement files for a very long time now. Not saying that it's a bad thing. I'm just wondering what's going on, but. Is you allowed to ask that question?
Here we are. I just wanted to see you put it back up again.
Are you gonna have any questions?
Yeah.
Um, so uh two of those, I'm not sure what the status is. It would be. Couple of those that Shannon is looking after there. And then some of those are just. More of winter time, we're not going to deal with them. Until springtime, because they deal with outdoor stuff. We really can't do anything. Or snap. During the winter. We'll build it uh boulevard developments or sheds yourself.
Did that one fellow give back to you about the boulevard development that we? Allowed him to use grow?
I had a phone call. That was it.
Okay.
It's not her phone, but he was out of the country at Gulf Springs.
Yeah, well, he emailed me and I emailed him back that we had made a decision on it. Yeah, he told me he was going to Mexico, right? For the winter. I I assumed the whole winter. I don't.
Yeah, I. Information has been mailed, but I haven't heard anything.
Good.
Okay.
This is on here, but I think seniors being. They're renting out their offices. Might be through L C S S or whatever. I'm not sure, but there's going to be. Counselors in there and they need. Internet is something that the town could provide. Or did they just get their own?
They had internet and they canceled it, so.
I know that was when you were young, so.
Well, then they should get it again.
Well, I was asking if it's something that the town can supply because. There the. Library is just right across the street, type thing.
So that's why you're asking me about internet.
But anyway, it's just something that I just wondered if. The town could supply because it's already very, very old, so.
Has there been any headway on the? But.
Live barn?
No, not live barn, the button we did for the town fiber.
Yeah, Travis is working on that.
It's in here. It was in here. That's true. Well. I guess Larry. Because I've finally reached the age where I could officially go there. Um. If they're renting rooms, that should probably cover the cost of the internet.
I I I misspoke, but they're not. Renting it, but these other people are using it and it's uh. It I think it's a service through F C S S.
Oh, so you're saying the town is doing things he's on.
Counseling service. And immunization and stuff like that.
Immunization, that's A H S.
Yeah, well, there was a time when a public nurse.
That's a little similar. They're gonna use.
An office in there.
Yeah, they're getting that back, because that was through the town. And I forgot the new person that we have that the.
Melody? Antica?
That took uh.
Carlos? Yeah, that's Melody.
Yeah, maybe that's.
She's the one that tried to get singer in town, just so just remember singer melodies.
Okay.
Well, maybe that's something.
Hello, when you show up, Tom. That's more animated.
I I don't know. I just thought I'd I'd ask.
You know, what what I was getting at when I asked them if we made headway on that is if we had that set up, then. It would be a would it be a potential option to put a. Transmitter on the library and receiver on the. Or the arena or whatever.
It it would be a lot simpler, yeah.
I know it can be done because.
Well, I know it can be done, but there was something.
I just don't know what it costs.
Well, there was something where we're talking about this budget about us being an I S P, we'd have to wait for a fiber contract and all this whatever, but that would still be a town building, right? So that should be able to fall under.
Yeah, once that infrastructure is in place, if you got a receiver on the senior center, it would be free essentially.
Right, and so it would just be the cost of the receiver and the installation of that receiver.
Yeah, which I think is relatively inexpensive when short grass. Beamed over to the school.
The thing that just is like a thorn in your side.
Okay, so it's just better that they just get a.
No, it it can be done and really from the library to the senior center, that should be easy.
We can't use libraries. We have to use our own.
That's why I said, once we get our infrastructure in place. From the arena.
The province said you couldn't use it?
But we can get fiber to this building and then we would. We would be beaming over to the arena from here.
I'll make some, I'll know, I'll ask some questions. We have, but if that wasn't one hundred percent free. When supernet was going through here. People forget, it's like Alberta government telephones forgets that everybody that lived in Alberta paid for their system. And then when it was paid for, they packed up and built a skyscraper in. Vancouver and called themselves TELUS. And now, well, I mean. Peons. Still have landlines in Alberta. Yeah. Yeah, they forget quickly. That was an Alberta government paid.
Is that relevant?
Because the Alberta government put in the supernet.
Can we get over this?
And then they contracted it to Accia to operate. It's not theirs. They say it's theirs, but it never really was. It's kind of like a street lights. Ah, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, we we.
Build them and the city says they're theirs, sir.
Yeah, still they need new bulbs and then they're ours again.
I watched it, but it's still like just a reminder.
Okay.
I do have a mark.
All right.
Um, says for twenty twenty five projects, six apps sell these sidewalks between second and third street. For potential grant found. Is that? Between second and third or between second and fourth?
As I said.
We extended it.
Second and fourth.
It says it says here second. And this one is make sure it's still.
It is.
Speaking of grants, have you guys hear back on the C fifth or the? Or whatever it was for the arena?
I have not heard anything yet.
These don't move fast, do they? Because it was end of January.
It's government.
Just saying something by the end of January, I would. I'm hoping to hear something very.
Still hopeful. We're like baseball players. Could learn strike.
Instead of just waiting or you just gotta wait?
I'm very hopeful that we will hear something soon.
You can hear that first time or second time? That sounded like she would just tell you to buzz off. They're gonna follow up.
Well, you did it just don't.
That's sick. Oh, yeah, I heard it all times. I was just asking.
You can't include it on the super.
No, I included. I was just asking if maybe instead of just.
Standard for the.
Waiting. What we're doing now.
Yeah, oh, my lord. Oh, all year we gotta listen to this. Run your campaign.
Oh, boy.
Put your soapbox out on the street, not in council chambers.
Too cold.
Okay. Any other questions? No, the managers report. Okay, Matt moved it for information. All in favor? Opposed? Scared. Council reports, verbal discussion.
Chris? I could, if somebody else has something to say first, that's great.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Please hold.
Um, can't find it right now. Basically, uh, the Rural Renewal Committee is pausing because of the government's change to immigration. Uh, there's gonna be much less immigration happening, so we're pausing the program. They had a phone call meeting on Friday. I thought Friday was Thursday, so I did take part of the phone call, but that's the gist of the phone call. They're pausing it anyways. And we already gave our notice that we're leaving them. So I'm not exactly sure how that translates to us if we get some money back. I don't know.
Okay. So. I was in Calgary for Thursday, meeting to a group of lawyers. And they. They talked about some new bills, so bills thirty three and thirty four are replacing FOIP. Um, the bills are in place. They're just not declared, so they're assuming that'll happen this spring. When it does. Uh, I think for most municipalities, they will actually be happier with the new bills. Uh, even if they have to retrain everybody. FOIP is in place till. This change. Is made law and it hasn't been made law. But in there. They've changed the abilities to charge, so you can actually charge more than twenty seven dollars an hour or twenty five cents a sheet or whatever. You can actually charge what it legitimately costs. To get the information that somebody's asking for.
Is that to try to curb people from abusing?
Well, that and if. Somebody is being vexatious, you can actually refuse them. You don't even have to comply anymore.
Well, interesting.
And you don't have to respond within thirty days anymore. And if. The time that you gave them. Seems to come up and you're not quite done yet, you can actually extend that out again. So they're actually, they're actually taking it to the point of maybe. Too easy? Because you could literally drag some information releases out. Like for a seriously long time. I don't think that long, but much longer than we can now. I believe right now a FOIP request has to be answered in thirty days or something, so. There will be, you could say in six months.
But you can reset it extensions because there's some people that will plan for that online.
Well, province and federals are easy that way. Like you could be looking at six to eight months to get an answer from the feds if you were looking for information. So this is actually, the municipal law was almost. Stretch out to what some provincial and federal laws are. So in some ways, that's okay. Um, they talked about bill twenty, which is all the changes to the Elections Act. Um, I think a lot of people are still upset. Um, that everything has to be hand counted just because some chads down in Florida. Didn't get counted properly and so Republicans, we don't like. Computers counting their ballots.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah. And they've made some recounts automatic if you're within ten percent, was it? So it there's there's definitely some changes. Most of the stuff I think that they were telling us. That pertain to us haven't changed much. Like, you know, if you owe municipality fifty bucks. You can't put your name in. If you haven't lived in in the community for six months, you can't put your name in. So some of those things haven't changed. The biggest change is the list of electorals. Which we just had today. But still, if somebody moves into town. They can still come and vote, like even if they're not on that list, they just have to prove that. They're in town here.
That was a year before you had to live in a municipality, or is it?
Six months.
Is it a year to run?
Six months to run.
Six months to run as well?
You can, if you move to Redcliffe on October nineteenth, you can vote on October twentieth. You can vote if you're a Canadian citizen and you actually moved here, you can vote instantly. You can't, you can't vote in more than one place. But if you can prove you live here. You can vote, even if you're not on that list.
For the municipal.
Yeah. Yeah.
So maybe I missed something. What was the six month part then for the?
Run.
Just to run is six months?
Yes. Yeah. You can't move in here in September and throw your name in. On nomination day.
But you can vote.
You can vote. Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other thing they talked about, they actually had a session on. Getting school sites ready because the province has announced ninety schools in three years and umpteen billions of dollars. And they mentioned that a lot, for some reason, lots of communities. They they land, the land. Use was um. Municipal reserve, and that's what they're building schools on. Now, I don't know how that works with the province, but that actually means that you may. Be able to keep title of the land that the school is on. Which would be interesting, because right now, if we title it to the school. Um. Then down the road, like say they decided to. Do away with I F Cox, that land is theirs to sell and do with what they want. Which is kind of pretty good to get something given to you and then sell it down the road. Whereas if it was technically ours, even if it was a hundred year lease for a dollar. At least someday, if they don't need the site back, like if it's a nineteen, and cause school sites are bigger now than they used to be, like we're talking. Anywhere from twelve to nineteen acres now instead of a block. So, which is only two acres. So it's a totally different situation anymore, but, but. I did ask the question, what's a service lot? And, and it's just like we thought, if, if there's services in the street. Adjacent to the property, that's a service lot. Whereas everybody at the school board and even. Some politicians seem to think that service lot meant. Everything is already into the site. Well, that's not what a service lot is. So.
I agree. Who you ask? But hang on, what answer you get?
But, uh, you know, we're already. Three quarters of the way into that, but that's still. What else did they talk about that was interesting? Oh, they, they rattled off a whole bunch of. Case law. You know, where people do silly things and get sued and once then it becomes kind of.
Did they talk about fifteen year law lawsuits?
No, they never talked about us yet, but they did talk about medicine hat.
Mostly recent cases.
Yeah. Mostly, some were even twenty twenty-five cases that they talked about. A lot, most of them were twenty twenty-four, but there was even a couple of twenty twenty-five. So you tell me how someone. Went to court in January and actually got finished.
I think probably the decision were issued.
Okay.
And we can, we can get affiliated.
Anyway, it's weird. Yeah. It was not bad. The morning was. While the first session was. Pretty sleepy, but after that it got better. So. But anyway, that's what happened up there.
You would have said yours first, I could have looked for mine through my email to say.
Yeah, I guess we're done. All right, landfill grass.
Was there a motion to receive that?
Nah, did somebody move those?
Sure.
All right, James.
Hmm? What do you want?
Want to vote?
Okay, James had to make a motion, otherwise couldn't vote on anything.
Yeah. James did.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose, scaring. Landfill grass. Larry. January was still a month. You think all the Christmas wrappers? Oh, maybe they recycle.
Yeah, what's under stands and inch for January?
Christmas paper?
Yeah.
Why?
I, I was so under the impression that for some reason, did you throw all your paper in the garbage?
Yes.
Boy.
Did you get presents? Okay. Two more than that.
I'll play a grip.
But wrap it up.
Okay. And save that coal, cause it makes good carbon for your compost.
Oh, okay.
Right? Anybody have any questions on any of the landfill grass? If not, all in favor? And council important meetings and events for information. So there's one not on there. Very, very, very important. But secret, so you're right, we can't have it on. Okay, I'll talk to you later. Very secret. Can I just get another head count for who's gonna be there?
I'll be there now.
Chris couldn't go to Vegas this week either.
What? I'd be there right now. Why not? Cause they've canceled my flight on Monday because of, I assume, weather. The weather the next day.
It happens a little week before though.
No, they canceled the night before.
Oh, okay.
And then, so they called me on Tuesday's flight, but it was gonna be the same weather. And Wednesday was gonna be the same weather. So I was like, well, do I really wanna shorten my trip? So I called WestJet, and I was gonna hold with them for two hours, still nobody on the phone, I just hung up the phone and canceled everything. So. Screw it, I'll stay here. So here I am.
So they don't fly in the cold?
I guess not.
Guess those data gates have problems.
I guess I did hear that the Tuesday flight did leave, but Wednesday looked like it got canceled. So I guess I would have. Still flown out Tuesday, but one last day, I don't like that.
Buffalo Airways folks.
Buffalo Airways.
They're BC three and minus forty temperature.
So I'll just go down in Martin.
Remember Time Air and those climate things, they flew like the cold.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you thought it went on a big bad.
I remember the word like.
I get answered if it's going.
I know. So how many do we got going to this then? There's me. We got four then?
Okay, we should have five. We had four without you. But now it's five.
Five.
But that actually means that if somebody gets hit by a bus between Wednesday and the next council meeting, we still have it on.
Well, maybe it happened. We're getting by my house. We're gonna accept that for information on the next councilman on the twenty-fourth then?
You gotta vote on it.
I don't know if it will be at the twenty-fourth meeting.
We anticipate taking it to the twenty-fourth for second and third.
Okay, cause there's a good chance I won't be at first March one. If I have to go, I'll zoom in.
It doesn't, I don't.
Zoom in.
Okay.
Zoom in for that. Yeah, I can.
As long as you've been to Wednesdays, you're, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just cause I should be in Vegas for March tenth now.
Hey, I'll see you there. Well, no. We're flying home on the night.
Well, I'm gonna be there for most of March.
Oh, so I can't have your card?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Of course. Well, Doc.
Okay.
You can buy there.
Oh.
I'll make reservation at Ramzes.
Where the hell is that?
Sweetie's House.
It's more than three dollars. I ain't taking you.
You spoil me.
Maybe if we both go jump up and down the. Uh, Heart Attack Cafe, we can get a free meal.
I thought you were gonna say jumping down on the heart bed.
No, you better wait in, put the pounds to get a free meal and it just, it's hard. Okay. Larry moved, all in favor? No, no.
Matt moved that.
Sorry, Matt moved that.
No, I moved that.
Chris moved that. Matt moved that.
Matt was that.
Right. Repeat or recess? Okay, five minutes.
Big sigh cap.
I think.
No.
No, I don't think.
Too short.
That is. I thought.
Alright, so nothing there.
Just the last one, isn't it?
Nothing there. Nothing there. Well, no, because Shannon just gonna put that in all by herself. Yeah.
She's up.
Just sneaky deaky.
I'll move that we direct administration to authorize MPD engineering to complete the level five, the D side base duty, or a budget of six billion dollars.
I'll move that we direct administration to authorize MPD engineering to complete
the level five, the D side base duty, or a budget of six billion dollars.
Bless everybody else at peace. They don't need to do that. Okay, everybody's clear? Questions or concerns? All in favor? opposed? Scary?
Or Jim, Matt's been able to do it for a while. It's because he's blind.
All in favor? opposed? Scary?